Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th, 2013 School Board Business Meeting. If you'll join me in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, sitting in the seat beside me is Jane Golding, our Director of Instructional Support, who is here on behalf of Superintendent NATO, who is in China, visiting schools there and blogging as best as she can through the Great Wall. I recommend her blogs. Do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda? No, seeing none. Item two, approval of school board minutes. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the school board minutes as listed in tonight's agenda in item two.
Any discussion?
One comment. It's move, but under the school board minutes, it, item seven says, "We affirm their confidence in Mr. Hellman's representation." That technically wasn't what he gave. He gave me authority to make decisions on resolutions. For the future, that's what you should do. Give authority to the representative to make decisions on the resolutions. The minutes aren't actually accurate.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to correct the minute?
Just change the sentence that reviewed the list of proposed resolutions and granted authority to Mr. Hellman to vote in his perceived messages to the district council.
Do you want to amend the motion to exclude those minutes?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
But just-
Which, which one? That's the regu-, item C, the regular business meeting?
A big one? Yes.
That's, okay.
I would change, I've moved that we modify five C to change the minutes under section seven.
I think what we need to do is amend the motion to exclude item C, and then we'll amend the minutes, and then they will come back before the board at our December business meeting.
Okay.
Would you like a new motion?
Or you can amend the motion.
I amend the approval of the school board minutes motion to exclude the minutes from the regular business meeting on Tuesday, October 8th, 2013, but include all the others as listed in tonight's agenda.
Okay, then I think the record will reflect what the, what the change needs to be in the minutes. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Seven, zero. How are you doing?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Item three, our student representatives.
All right, well, school's been going very well. We finished up Spirit Week, and it went extremely, extremely well. The whole school came together, and especially for the football game, and we had a lot of fun that week. Now we're moving on to planning Winter Fest in Prom. And also, quarter one just ended two Fridays ago, and it went very well. We do live in a very challenging school district, so to see students working hard to get their grades is always rewarding. And on that note, we're going to talk about the honor roll as well.
Yeah, so in discussions with the, with the Student Advisory Council at the school, there's been a lot of discussion about the honor roll and the necessity of the honor roll that is kind of questioned by some students, some viewing it as a sort of an exclusionary factor to some students. And so what we've been doing is just talking to Mr. Shet about the honor roll and seeing what changes need to be made or whether it needs to be removed. And there has been a poll sent out to the students about the honor roll to see, to get kind of a wider perspective, other than the, other than just the representatives for the Student Advisory Council. And also, on a slightly different note, the speech team won first place at the recent Falmouth Tournament, and the theater is, production is going to take place the day before and the day before that, and, and two days before Thanksgiving, and it is called Take Four.
And I believe there is a middle school representative also here to speak.
Oh, great.
Good evening. My name is Mariana, and I'm the seventh grade representative. On Friday, we had an assembly towards our veterans. We also had a hallway that was posted with photos that we all walked through afterwards. And also, we have been talking about changing our school into the five-two-one-zero program, which is basically trying to get our students to become more active. And we are planning to try to do that sooner than, rather than later, and we're then to try to poll to see if the students would like to do that. And that is basically all.
Thank you, Mariana.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mary?
I have a question for Tim, actually, and the honor roll. Are you talking, are you all talking about doing away with the honor roll per se, or publishing the honor roll?
Just the publishing.
Just the publishing and the, okay. That's interesting.
And especially because many, I know that schools in Cumberland County tend to go towards the eighty-five and above is considered a B, but I know colleges look at an eighty and above to be a B.
Right.
So it makes it a little bit more challenging to get, to achieve the honor roll.
Sure.
Thank you. Was there, is there another question?
That was my question. Thank you.
Well, okay.
Don, I just want to say, Mariana, welcome. We're glad to be here. I know it's very scary up here in the Baytown. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Item four, comments from the public on agenda items. Agenda items. I believe we may have comments tonight. If we do, I would ask you to approach the podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes and two items on the agenda. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Tom Dunham, and I've owned property at 12 Becky's Oak Lane for the past thirty-five years. I would like to address the proposal before you to establish a one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue bond for deferred maintenance. My concern lies in the suggestion to replace the various EPDM roofs. I am very familiar with this roof system and have owned industrial properties well over a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and many of those are twenty-five years or older. Those roofs have maintained their integrity over the years and likely will for many more years to come. Based on experience, annual inspections and maintenance are the keys to longevity. This week, I spoke to the owner of Industrial Roofing, one of Maine's largest roofing companies, and Janet Hanson, who is a partner at SMRT, The Architects. I asked them their opinion on the high school roof, which has a one-eighth slope versus one and a quarter, versus one-quarter slope. They both stated that in itself, it is not unusual, nor does it suggest a replacement. Many roofs were constructed in this way due to value engineering and cost, costs. Yes, today, they would prefer a quarter-inch slope, but it should not in itself be the determining factor for replacement. Current EPDM manufacturers are offering up to thirty years and more for warranty, which underscores their success in this climate. My experience suggests that annual service maintenance is a must. A prudent course may be to replace the seams, which we have done multiple times over the years to extend the longevity of the roof, and it works for a lot less money than a replacement. This annual service and maintenance cost should easily be covered in the annual projected debt service savings. Respectfully, I ask that we defer this bond decision until we receive a more thorough assessment on the school's roofs. It's my understanding, because I got an email today from Greg, that this report may be forthcoming in the next two weeks, so let's see what that is for us before you make the decision on the bond, the amount of the bond, because what I read was the roofs are about eight hundred thousand dollars, within that, one point seven five million, and it's a significant amount. Given that we will soon be reducing the school indebtedness, I suggest we should first recognize that the annual state school subsidies, subsidies are tenuous at best. Thus, we should establish a healthy rainy day fund. Secondly, we certainly could apply a portion of the projected annual savings toward capital improvements without increasing additional debt. You owe it to your Cape senior citizens who are on a fixed, fixed income, and those families who are financially struggling to make ends meet, that they receive some financial relief due to the ensuing debt retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
My name's William Gross from Seven Seaview Avenue, and I'm speaking about the same issue on the one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond. I'm against the, having the council vote to issue this bond, and I want to begin by saying, well, what are the consequences if you do issue the bond? I plugged into my Excel calculator, the one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, twenty-year bond, and a four percent interest, and this is what Excel shot back out. Over the twenty years, we'll be paying eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest, in addition to the principal we pay back. That's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we taxpayers will be paying in our property taxes, and the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars will not buy us a single square foot of roof, a single furnace, a single electrical panel. It's all just interest going back to whoever loans us the one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, if we can make the improvements without issuing the bond, you will automatically save eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the taxpayers of Cape Elizabeth, and that's exactly what I think you should do. The other consequence of issuing the bond is the annual debt service on this bond will be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. And this means that our, in 2016, when our debt service is going to drop by seven hundred thousand dollars, we'll lose a hundred and thirty, our debt service will only drop by five hundred and seventy thousand dollars instead of by seven hundred thousand dollars. We'll lose a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that potential savings. Now, I believe there's no need at all to, to, to issue the bond in order to pay for the capital improvements that the council has looked at and made this wonderful ten-year plan. I think it's a great idea, looking at our capital needs for ten years. But let's look at how we can fund it, and if we look just at the documents here, I would address, ask you to look, well, I went into the, the handout, and the handout for combined municipal and school funding, and in there, on page twelve, it gives major projects exceeding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it lists them by year. And indeed, in here, we have in the year 2016, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital expenses for, to be spent in that year, and the seven hundred thousand dollars are deferred, the debt service. In 2016, we're going to get a reduction in debt service of seven hundred thousand dollars, and that's every year after 2016. And I'm saying that will pay for these improvements. Well, in 2016, of course, seven hundred thousand dollars can't pay for one point seven, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But look at the year 2017. There's not a single dollar in, in major projects for the school in that year. And let's look at the year 2018, and there's only four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So over those three years, we'll have seven hundred thousand dollars a year. That's two million, one hundred thousand dollars, and we'll, we'll only have one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from 2016 to spend, to, to, of capital improvements, and we'll only have another four hundred and thirty-five thousand in 2018. So that's seven hundred thousand dollars, just based by the schedule you put together, will pay for all of the, those three years. And let's look at the years after that. In 2019, we're going to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital improvements for the gymnasium. There's a brickwork waterproofing. Mr. Moore, is that part of the school budget or the municipal? Can you tell me? I don't know myself.
Depends what building it's for. If it's for a school building, it's a school budget. If it's for a municipal building, it'd be-
Well, let's take the worst case. Let's assume it's for the school, school budget. So that means in the year 2019, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the gym and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the brickwork waterproofing. Now, that means we have four hundred thousand dollars to, in major projects, but we have seven hundred thousand dollars in savings in the year two hundred, two, 2019. Likewise, in the year 2020, we only have in major projects, two hundred thousand dollars saved. We have seven hundred thousand dollars in savings from the, the reduction in debt service. We don't need the bond to pay for that. Now, it is true, in the year 2021 and 2021, uh, 22, we have about a million dollars in projects on here, and we only have about seven hundred thousand dollars in savings. But in the year 2023, we only have three hundred thousand dollars in projects, and the year 2024, we have none, no dollars in projects. So we can certainly spread those projects out and, and, and use the seven hundred thousand dollars in annual savings from our, the debt service to pay for these. And again, in the, in the year 2025, we're going to get another four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt service savings, because three more bonds we paid off, and we'll have then a total of one million, one hundred thousand dollars in, in, in annual debt service savings, as, as long as we do two things, as long as we do not issue a new school bond, and as long as we keep all of the other items in our budget at the same level of spending they are, adjusted for inflation, increase them each year for inflation. And, and I think what this shows is that we can fund all of the major projects that are on here for, for, by just, without issuing any more bonds, merely by using the, the seven hundred thousand dollars a year savings in debt service. Now, I think there are two questions that, if the school board is going to vote on this, they should, they should answer these two questions. Now, the first one is, is the, in the Harriman Report, the Harr, the Harriman Report. The Harriman Report says that there's about two million dollars in roofing, capital improvement projects in the high school, and about two million dollars in capital improvement projects in the middle school and Honco. So it's four million dollars in roofing projects. But the Harriman Report specifically says that the roofing projects that were done in 2004 on the high school were done, the previous speaker talked about that, that, were not done to specification. They were, the slope was only one-eighth of an inch per foot instead of one-quarter of an inch per foot. And Harriman says the roof will deteriorate. It won't last its whole lifetime. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but this seems like a, a, a pure case of negligence by the contractor who put it in. And the question that I'm, I think the school board should answer is, why aren't we suing the contractor and taking the damage, the money we recover in damages, and using that as part of our capital improvement program? Likewise, the Harriman Report talks about the, the middle school roof. Again, there are two million dollars in, in capital improvement car, roofing, new roofing that Harriman identifies on the middle school in Honco. The Harriman Report says on the middle school roof, that the, on the baluster part of the roof, the baluster stones, you have the fabric roof, and then there's a level of stones put on top of the roof. That's the balustr. It says that the normal practice on a balisted roof is you put a nylon mat in between the fabric roof and the stones, and the Harriman Report says this was not done by the contractor who put that in. And the Harriman Report says without that mat, the roof will not last its expected twenty-five to thirty years lifetime. So again, this is another case where it seems to me, a non-lawyer, that we would sue the contractor, get some damage, some relief, some damages for, for them not meeting specifications, and use those damages as part of the fund, the new roofs, the four million dollars in new roofing we're going to be spending over the next ten years. And then the last point I have is the, there's a second question I think the board should answer. If, if the board is going to borrow one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, in order to do these capital improvement program, of projects. Excuse me. If the board is going to borrow this money, then what is the board going to do with the seven hundred thousand dollars per year in savings from the debt service that we're going to get? How is the board going to spend this money? If, for example, if the board decides, well, we're going to, we're going to save seven hundred thousand dollars, we can reduce property taxes by seven hundred thousand dollars. That would be about a four percent reduction in everyone's property taxes in the town. If the board is going to do that, I suspect there would be a groundswell of support for issuing the bond, but I suspect the school board has other plans for the seven hundred thousand dollars. And I think it's only fair that before the school board votes on borrowing one million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital improvement program, the, the school board should tell the voters and taxpayers in the town what you intend to do with the seven hundred thousand dollars in savings that we will get in 2016 and every year thereafter when our debt service decreases. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I would just point out that we, we, not to you, we follow a, an agenda here, and we will be getting back, circling back to this issue toward the end of the agenda, and at that point, there'll be an opportunity for board discussion or questions or comments. So that's why, that's why we'll be getting to that later in the night and not just right now. Were there any other comments from the public on agenda items? Okay, seeing none. We're moving on to communications, and why don't we start with the, do we have the coach here yet?
Mr. Thorack.
Oh, Mr. Thorack, yes, yeah. Why don't we start with the boys' cross-country team? Congratulations. Come on up.
Jeff, is Jeff, is Jeff Thorack here?
He is.
I thought he usually led this, but that's all right.
Hi. I'm Derek Bayou, the coach of the boys' cross-country team, and I'm glad to be back here. It's the last year, and the boys, we won the state title again, so we're back. It was a great season. These guys put in a lot of work, starting in June, and, you know, a lot of miles. You probably saw them out on the roads, and they were really committed to excellence. And we had a great year, undefeated regular season, conference champions, regional champions, and state champions, and eleventh in the New England's last weekend. Should I call the-
Yes. Three spring players. Come on up.
We don't have all the gentlemen with us today. Some are competing in a science meet for the school.
By the way, the TV's over there if you want to show them the profile.
Yeah, turn around. Wrong way.
The big thing right back there. That way you get your faces on TV.
Actually, I think this camera is on. Oh, no, he just turned that one.
Hold the red light.
Don't confuse them.
Follow the red light.
The young gentlemen that we do have here, we have Chris Kovell, we have Alex Decky, Vince Tarpo, Julian Pelzer, one of our captains, Peter Doan, one of our captains, Mitch Morris, we've got Mac Hufford, Sam Earnshaw, and Mike Magravito.
And for the people on TV, he was reading right to left, just so they know who he is.
Very good. So these young gentlemen just had another outstanding year. They've represented their school, their community with great honor and integrity. Just an outstanding group to work with. I'm very lucky to have the senior group that we've had for the last four years. Liam Simpson, who is not here, Trevor Ewald, along with Julian, Peter, and Sam. They really returned this program to the top. It was since, the last time they had won before last year was 2006, and so now we've got two in a row, and I think the foundation is there to continue to be one of the top teams. We've got a couple of top returners, and, you know, we've got some young kids here ready to step into the role next year. So it's been an outstanding year, and thank you all.
If you guys could stay, if you could stay up here, Senator Millet is here with a legislative sentiment. Oh, I'm sorry, and?
Coach, you didn't talk about the New England's. You might want to say, when she's done giving the award, you might want to talk about the New England's as well.
Okay. And Representative Kim Monahan-Derrick is also here.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just say, I have the pleasure of having a member of my family on this team, and, and experienced for the first time ever in my life, the culture of cross-country racing and training. And I am here to tell you that is one of the most astonishing things I have ever witnessed in my lifetime. These young men and women from the girls' cross-country team run at least six times a week, mile after mile, push themselves to the point of nearly breaking, to only then go to a race, and push themselves to the point of breaking and beyond. And the discipline and courage that these young men show is really quite remarkable and should make all of us proud to have them representing the schools and the town of Cape Elizabeth. And then Kim will read the sentiment.
So State of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, join in recognizing the Cape Elizabeth High School 2013 Boys' Cross-Country Team on winning its 2013 Class B Cross-Country State Championship. We congratulate the members of the team on this achievement and send them our best wishes. And be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 126th legislature and the people of the State of Maine. Sponsored by Senator Millet of Cumberland County, Representative Scott Hammond of Cape Elizabeth, and Representative Monahan-Derrick of Cape Elizabeth. So congratulations to all of you.
As Mr. Hillman said, he wanted me to speak about the New England's. We competed in that race on Saturday down in Manchester against the best teams from Rhode Island, Connecticut, Vermont, and New Hampshire, and unfortunately, we got the worst spot on the starting line, and so we had a lot of work to do just to get into position throughout the race. But we did a great job. Liam Simpson, who is not here, he's at the science meet, got an All-New England Award. He was eighth overall. That's a pretty outstanding accomplishment, the first All-New England athlete I've coached in cross-country. And, you know, the team finished eleventh, which is an outstanding accomplishment against the best from around the area in, in New England. Just, it was just a cap, just capped off a great season, that race, and, you know, I thought we might have been able to do a little bit better with a better spot. We really had to battle. Liam was in sixtieth place at the mile, and he worked his way up to eighth. So as you can imagine, it was not an easy thing, but these guys competed with, you know, outstanding, they were just outstanding all year long, so, you know, just a great way to end the season. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the coach a couple of questions.
Sure.
Team can sit. I noticed that my son is no longer on the team, and I was particularly pleased that you made it to the states and to the New England's again, so Trevor, who gave up his place to my son to run in the New England's, was actually able to run in the New England's when he gave up his spot last year, which is pretty unbelievable. But we also had some great accomplishment, just so people can understand how great some of our runners ran. If you could, like, say, pick the top five guys and give, like, in the state, what, what was their average per mile? I think it'll stun some people, particularly Liam's and-
Yeah, as I mentioned, Liam was actually the state runner-up. He ran, his final time was sixteen, nineteen for five K. That's round five, ten or so per mile. But his, his time at the New England meet was a five-oh-four average at fifteen forty-five. Peter Doan was fifth in the state. He ran a sixteen thirty-seven. And this course at Twinbrook is not a, a flat course. It's very hilly, and, you know, it's tough to run those times. Mitch Morris, in his first year of cross-country, he was eighth in the state, and he is the number one returner in Class B next year based on the state meet results. And we had Kyle Kennedy, he's a junior, he was twelfth overall. And then we had Julian Pelzer, who was top twenty-seven. So all these young gentlemen actually got up to be honored. They honored the top thirty at the state meet, so we had all five guys up there. We were the only team to do that. And, you know, we also had an athlete that was injured. He was our number three runner all year. He was our number-three runner all year, Will Britton. So we had to run without him in the championship, so that made it a lot tougher, you know, when you lose one of your top guys. But, you know, these guys didn't let that bother them. They just, the next man stepped up and they ran as a team and, you know, the end result was what we wanted.
I just want to add to that, coming from a small school like Cape and having the number of people achieve that kind of ranking in the state and in New England is pretty unbelievable. Particularly impressed that our top five all got recognized as being in the top 30. That's pretty amazing for a class of 130 kids. And we have some superb kids there. Not only are they great runners, I know most of them, they're really great kids. And I think as a school district, we're proud, and I'm particularly very proud of them all. So thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to recognition of one of our own, Mary Townsend, who is serving in her last school board business meeting tonight. And there may be members of the board or members of the legislature who are here who are going to offer some, some thoughts. Why don't we start with the senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you, Mary. This fantastic sign says. And I'm just so pleased that I'm able to be here this evening to, to just personally thank Mary Townsend for her, we measure things by years, but really it should be calories, I would imagine, the amount of energy that is expended. Certainly over the, the time that, that Mary was serving, there were a number of very challenging transitions, but you wouldn't know that from afar. Everything just seemed to sail along perfectly. But as someone who has been on the board herself, I know that there's a lot of work that goes behind what, what we see in the public. And your passion, your sense of purpose, and perfection, dedication is something that we as a town are grateful for and value, and I can't wait to see what you do next. Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few points about Mary. I've known Mary for about 60 years, I think. I wonder if, how quickly you got into math. Mary and I started about eight or nine years ago.
Are we roasting Mary? Or are we?
This is, this is my idea of a compliment. If she looks that good at 60, she will be complimented. And don't interrupt me again. We started, I was invited to an organization called Citizens Advocating for Public Education, which I first met Mary seven or eight years ago or so. And it was a room, I didn't know anybody in the room except for maybe one person. And I walked into the room and noticed it was only myself and Frank Govanow. They were the only two males in the room. And a wide variety of very powerful people, some of whom are in that room, powerful ladies. And it was an awful lot of fun. I learned a lot, but I noticed this young lady with a southern accent who was so polite and so kind and smiled at everybody. And I'm thinking to myself, ah, we're going to get just creamed if we're going to be led by this Southern belle. By about the second meeting, I realized that Mary, being the Southern belle, had a core of steel, a great intellect, and even though she had a smile on, she totally ran that room and all the very strong-willed people in it. And I remember saying to Frank, boy, we're two little kitties in a room full of very large lions, and we ought to keep our mouths shut for the next couple of years. I've learnt a lot from Mary being on board with her. It may not seem it, but I've learned a lot of diplomatic skills. I've learned a lot of consideration, being nice to people, not being as sarcastic as I'm capable of being. And I asked Mary, in diplomacy and a variety of things, not cross-examining as much as I used to. And I asked Mary, after four years, how do you think? She goes, well, you're better, a little better. I think that's quite an accomplishment. But I do want to say to Mary that, and I mean this with the deepest recesses of my heart, I don't think I've met a smarter, more insightful, more compassionate person since I moved to Cape. I am going to miss you terribly on this school board. You've been a great leader, and I'm going to leave with one small example of how Mary never ceases to astonish me. We had an incident in this school last year regarding TEDx that Mary put enormous amount of time and effort into it. And she personally took it personally when a certain event occurred. We had an occasion to vote on something this year involving some part of that incident, and I was watching, and Mary basically led the discussion, started off with a long speech about our job is to do the best we can for kids, for students, both socially and academically. And it was just a beautiful speech, and she totally rose above whatever her personal concerns were and voted what was in the best interest of the school district and the kids. And I just want to say, I've, I've seen a lot of people in life who like to talk the talk, but they rarely ever walk the walk. And I watched Mary do it, and I was never proud of her during that moment. And I don't want to ruin my image, but I will really miss you, Mary.
Thank you, David.
That's so lovely. Thank you.
Michael?
Sure. I usually read these, not that I've done many of them, but Mary's service to the schools and community reflects her genuine interest in giving every child a chance to develop, grow, and find their own path to success. Whether it be in her role as a school board chair, a member of the mission and vision committee, the CIF liaison, a member of the finance committee, or the board's public relations leader, she always found time to listen and provide space for different viewpoints and experiences. Mary's commitment to hearing all sides of the issue provided a sound basis for the board and district to navigate difficult situations without losing sight of the big picture. Mary not only listened to stakeholders and board members, she provided clear guidance and direction, combining her professional and personal experiences with her innate ability to identify what the community as a whole expected. Mary's passion for education and her attention to the needs and struggles of every child were constant sources of motivation for the board to explore all options and take risks when needed. Needless to say, Mary will be sorely missed. Her contributions to the board are innumerable, and she has set a very high bar for all of us sitting on the board. Mary, thank you for your service and getting us all on the bus.
Kate?
I usually don't read, as you probably all know, but I want to thank you, Mary. Not only, it was the one dinner party I went to and sat next to you, and you made the school board seem so smooth.
You never sit next to me at a dinner party. Didn't I meet you at a dinner party?
You just made it seem very smooth.
And you.
Not only your three children you were raising at home in the really active years of high school and middle school and high school, you've stepped up for every committee. And from the smallest one, it's just a couple of people on the committee and a couple of citizens, to the bigger pictures, which is TEDx, as well as chair, as well as, I'm not even going to name them all, but from the small to the big, from the personnel to the policy level, you really, you've done amazing work, and it's always been a pleasure to hear your, what you have to say, and to think about who you're thinking about when you make these statements. And it's been a joy to be with you. Thank you very much.
It's been a joy.
So we have a, a small, the board has a small token of our appreciation of your service, which will do nothing to represent the quantity or the quality of the work that, that you've done on behalf of this, this town. Among all the things that people have already pointed out, I would also remind the citizens of Cape Elizabeth of the most, one of the most difficult and important tasks of the, that a school board ever does is the job of hiring a superintendent. And Mary began that work with, with really what became the seeds of our mission and vision work by going out to stakeholders and beginning to gather a sense of what this community was looking for, for, on behalf of their, the community's students. And, and that work with stakeholders formed the basis of, of the search. You had the courage to, to reopen that search when the, the best possible candidate wasn't available, and that's something that, you know, with, with all of the eyes of the community on you takes tremendous courage. And then, and then you led the board through the, through the, both through the transition with the interim superintendent and through a new superintendent with, with grace and, and courage and with the capability of listening to all, all stakeholders. And, and I served very closely with you during that period of time, and will also miss very much working with you, Mary. So thank you. And somewhere...
Right behind you.
Have a little gift.
Shall I open it later?
You, you...
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Can I say a few words?
You may rebut.
May I rebut? Thank you. I'm like Michael. I think we Southerners read. It's with tremendous gratitude to the Cape Elizabeth community that I stepped down from my two terms. It has been such a joy, and there are lots of people to thank, but in the interest of time, I'm going to hit the high notes. First of all, thank you to the exceptional Cape Elizabeth district leadership team for kindly and respectfully enduring my questions and concerns and frustrations, in particular the building principles. Although my work as a board member required less overlap with our new stars, Kelly and Michael, I think Jeff has borne the brunt of more of my questions, and I thank you for your level-headed and thoughtful patience with me through my service. And thank you to all the district leadership team for their service to our schools and to our students. Even though she's not here, I'd like to issue a thank you to our clever and lively superintendent, Meredith, who, as I was thinking about her, she actually embodies all of the qualities that we list in our mission, our mission and vision statement. She models everything that we want to cultivate in students: perseverance, effective communication, integrity, joy in learning, collaboration. And her brilliant leadership style, I feel, brought new promise and energy to this district. So I'm excited to see what happens in the future with the strategic plan in general. But mostly, I want to thank the people up here and board members that I have served with in the past as well, Rebecca and Kim. You know, I was here long ago for the Rebecca Hair Flip and others, as well as Trish Brigham, Karen Burke, Kathy Ray, Linda Winker, Peter Cotter. But to this sitting group here, I am so incredibly indebted, and it has been an honor to serve with these people. We are like, it's a little hard to explain, except we're like one caring, close dysfunctional family. With all of our, all of our talents and all of our faults, and somehow we work very well together, the synergy. I've never worked in a group that's had better synergy. And, you know, I'm just so grateful to all of you, to Joe for your razor-sharp focus on policy and for cutting that policy book and your perseverance in doing that, and as well as your ability to narrate the most complicated and lengthy motion I've ever heard on my, on my tenure on the board. It's been an honor working with you. And Elizabeth, my hat is off to you. Your kids are very young, you are busy, you work as a tennis coach, and you bring a very important perspective to this board as a former educator yourself and as the child of an educator. You bring a legacy that this, that adds a great value to this board. So I thank you for, for running and for serving. To Kate, our very own Earth Mother, thank you for always being the voice for people who can't often find their voice, and for always, always keeping the social and emotional needs of our students, our teachers, our community in front and, and in center of everything we do. You serve a very important role, and thank you for doing that, and keep it up. To David, although we rip each other mercilessly, I really appreciate your wit and your humor, your big-picture thinking, and your ability to annoyingly be right most of the time. Although crisp is not always part of your extensive vocabulary, I would take you on my team every time, despite the fact we would always go into overtime. I think our shortest meeting was the meeting when David missed. Wasn't that like a record-breaking short meeting?
I think the longest one was when I talked the most.
I think so, but thank you, and keep fighting that good fight for middle school math. I'll be right behind you on the sidelines. To Michael, I'm so grateful to have a fellow Southerner on the board, and thanks for keeping us focused and for being willing to have some very difficult conversations with a premise, hard on issues and soft on people. I've learned a lot from you. And your business acumen and your graciousness have been a gift to our team as well as to the public. And finally, to our fearless leader, John, serene and composed, kind-hearted, open-minded, quick to assess, and slow to speak. I have this theory that you're a closeted Buddhist monk. And I have multiple incarnations before I get to where you are, but I am so grateful for having the opportunity to learn from you. Thanks for being such an expert listener and leader and catherder in keeping us all moving forward. I will miss working with all of you, and serving with you has been really, truly one of my great life's joys. I have loved every minute of it. I mean, there are times I think you serve on committees and you dread the minute, you know, you, you think about it and you dread it. I have loved walking into these meetings and serving with you all, and I feel very blessed to have known you and to have served with you. Thanks for the sacrifices you make and you'll continue to make on behalf of the Cape Elizabeth schools and our youngest citizens, and best of luck to you all and to Susannah. Thank you.
And now on to the superintendent's report, which again will be delivered by Jane Golding, our Director of Instructional Support. Thank you, Jane, for being here tonight.
Thank you. So Superintendent Nato left this for us. Cape Robotics, the VEX tournament held November 2nd at the Middle School and Poncove Elementary School. VEX robotics teams from Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont competed. Two teams, Team 56D, Haley and Andrew, and 56A, Luke and Anthony, qualified for the Maine State VEX Championship in February. Team 56A, Luke and Anthony, also won the Excellence Award in part for their design of a transmission that allows redistribution of power from drivetrain to the lift mechanism depending upon the need. The Cape Robotics Maker Celebration is scheduled for November 14th, that would be this week, in Poncove Middle School Cafeteria from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Congratulations to the girls' high school volleyball team and their coach, Sarah Beckel, in winning Class A sportsmanship banner for displaying respect, fair play, honesty, and a love for the game. The team was selected by votes from athletic administrators, coaches, and players. The Parent Engagement and Satisfaction Survey, Student Engagement and Satisfaction Survey, and the School Climate and Culture Surveys are currently open for responses through November 18th. 18th. The student survey is for students' grades five through 12 and is being administered during the school day. And we know that the Boys' Cross Country was honored tonight. I have a resignation. District Technology Director Eric Kramer has resigned his position with the district. We will be working with the district technology staff to plan for how to manage this transition. And that's it for news. I know there'll be a lot more when Meredith returns from China.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I want to, when we were on Item 1 and I asked about adjustments to the agenda, I should have mentioned Item 6G, which we will take up at our next business meeting in December.
Okay.
John?
I just, before we move on to the next item of the agenda, and I know we'll probably address this next month, but it just seems timely that, I just wanted to give a shout out to the girls' soccer team at the high school. They won their Class D state championships as well. So, good news all around. We've done well.
Thank you. I do hope we will have that seen here next at our.
I hope so, too.
So, on to new business. Item 6A. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the job description for the EdTech 1 Special Education File Clerk.
Second? So, there is one change to the job description, which is that it's a 10-hour, I'm sorry, it's a 20-hour, not a 10-hour job. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. It's a 20-hour, not a 10-hour job. So, if we can amend the motion.
Sure.
Select that fact.
I move that we approve the job description for the EdTech 1 Special Education File Clerk with the amendment that it's actually for a 20-hour job and not a 10-hour job as listed.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question about that.
Yes.
With the amendment from 20 hours to 10 hours, is it for the same fees listed in the, or is it just an hourly rate?
It's an hourly rate.
Okay. Thank you.
It's the same hourly rate. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Item B. This is, we won't need a motion, but these are policies for first read. Joe, would you like to?
Certainly. As listed out in this evening's packet, there are a number of policies in Item 6B that we are putting forth for a first read. And we do ask that you read through any of the changes. The policies themselves are not only in this evening's packet, which is listed on the website. Of note, I know that we did receive a lot of comments on Policy GCQE, enrollment of non-resident employees' children. There's been a minor change to that policy. And in hearing a lot of feedback, we've taken that feedback into consideration in amending that policy. And then also, reviewed recently, I'm not quite sure why it's bulleted out differently, is Policy IGA, but that is also being put forth for a first read. And then also, for first reading consideration, we have gone through and recommended for deletion a number of policies that are either more procedure than policy or are, I'm not quite sure how to say this, frivolous, weren't really necessarily policy-worthy. And then also, some of them were just simply a matter of state law. And again, if you have any comments on these first reading of these policies, you can reach me or Meredith. And I don't have the date of our next meeting, which would be the deadline for those comments at the tip of my tongue.
But it's the first Monday in December, right?
Mm-hmm. Did we change that to accommodate for holiday schedule?
I don't think.
It's December 2nd.
I think it's December 2nd.
December 2nd, Monday morning. So, if you could, if anyone does have any comments on these policies, if they could get that to Meredith or I, Friday, November 29th, that'd be great.
John, I have a quick comment.
Yes, Dave.
November what?
November 29th. Friday, November 29th. It's the deadline for comments.
Before I get my, what's the date, what's the time? 7:30?
7:30.
Well, I can actually make it this year. I do have a variety, I would just tell you that I have gone through them all. I have a host of comments, both substantive, structural, and so forth and all these. I will put them in writing with suggested changes and get them to you by that date. But I have a lot on these.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, John.
Item C. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the athletic and extracurricular staff nominations as listed in our packet, Item 6C.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mary. Is there any discussion?
I actually have something to say. It's not Sarah Sullivan anymore. It's actually Sarah Beckel. That's her new last name.
So, the person hasn't changed, but the names changed?
Right.
Okay.
Boy, nitpickier than me. I like it.
What?
I said, I like the fact that somebody's nitpickier than me.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for pointing that out for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Ciara.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? All right. Item 6D. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve an unpaid leave for the high school teacher. I don't have the teacher's name in front of me. I shouldn't approve the motion.
It's Sarah Harrington.
Sarah Harrington, for the school year 2013-2014.
Second?
I'll second.
Mary? Is there any discussion?
Could I amend that motion to be to grant her the leave as set forth in her letter attached to our packet? It's fairly specific. It defines what leave it is she's thinking, which is not a total leave for 2013-14. It's fairly specific about the time she wants to leave for.
Okay.
So, while we have during.
The letter is in executive session. It's not in the packet.
Oh. Well, then, I would say that we move it, how can that be? We still have to vote on it in public session, so maybe we should read it. We need the name and we need the terms.
We don't need to read the letter.
But we do have to approve what her leave is.
Yeah. So, if we can just get the dates out of that. Does someone have that right in front of them?
Yes, I have it here.
I think the leave of absence is until the end of the third quarter, which is March 28th, 2014.
Right. So, would you like me to amend the motion to state out the terms of time?
Please.
Okay. I move that we approve the unpaid leave for Sarah Harrington, the high school teacher, as stated out in her letter of request from Thursday, October 10th, 2013, and returning in time for the start of the fourth quarter on March 31st, 2014.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? All right. Item E. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the Cape Elizabeth Schools bloodborne pathogens exposure control.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think Meredith would step in to say that this is a plan that's required by law. And there was a change made to the plan. It's apparent in the packet, which has to do with including the kind of training coaches need to deal with bloodborne pathogens. Is there any other discussion?
The only question I would have, and I guess Meredith will probably be the one to answer it, I doubt that the state or federal law, I mean, is this a plan that's been, is in compliance with CDC standards?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I would assume that it is, but I don't know.
Okay. As I said, I think Meredith knows the answer, but I would assume it should, it would have to be, otherwise it would not be appropriate for us to approve. It has to comply with the CDC standards and protocol.
May I point out that it says in the opening paragraph, "In accordance with OSHA bloodborne pathogen standards, 29 CFR."
Okay. Well, OSHA is not CDC, but we might as well vote on it. I assume it's done right.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Okay. Item F. May I have a motion?
I move we request the town council seek the issuance of bonds in fiscal year 2016 for the school capital projects as listed in the amount of $1,750,000.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Joe?
Sorry for the long time.
It's all right.
Okay. Michael?
Sure. We can do the plan over. The thank you, Mary, that'd be kind of appropriate.
I'm going to turn the lights. I also serve on the School Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Just so everyone knows, if you're unable to, all these slides, proposals, and all the documents I refer to are included in the School Board Meeting Agenda Packet, where if you go to the School Board website or the Town of Cape Elizabeth website, you can access all of these materials. Many of these you've already seen if you've been following our planning process. So, let me jump right in. Tonight's school bond proposal is part of a continuing effort to maintain and manage the significant investments made by Cape Elizabeth's community and the district's school, buildings, facilities, and equipment. Over the past two years, the School Board's Building and Grounds Committee, Finance Committee, which includes the entire school board, the Strategic Planning Committee, and the entire school board have solicited stakeholder feedback on the district's capital needs and priorities. Additionally, the school board has worked with the town council to provide stakeholders with a comprehensive summary of Cape Elizabeth's overall capital improvement needs. This slide includes a listing of the opportunities provided to stakeholders over the past two years to share their thoughts, learn about the school's capital needs and priorities, and understand how the school board plans to maintain the schools. Cape Elizabeth Schools facilities represent the largest taxpayer-funded capital asset in Cape Elizabeth. The school facilities alone have an estimated replacement cost value of over $50 million. As shared with the entire community in August and September of this year, the Buildings and Grounds Committee provided a 10-year capital stewardship report. The key conclusions were, one, sustained investments are required to maintain the quality and functionality of the school's facilities; and, two, scheduled asset maintenance and capital investments must keep up with depreciation. As shared with the entire community in August and September of this year, and November of last year, and again in March of this year during school budget meetings, the school board identified some critical capital investment project needs over the next three years. These must-have investments include scheduled roof removal and replacement, heating equipment replacement, and electrical systems upgrades. As most homeowners know, scheduled roof replacements are mandatory and can be a relatively large investment. Similarly, school roof replacements are mandatory and a relatively large investment as well. The cost of a single school roof replacement can exceed half a million dollars, making it difficult to fund through the annual CIP budget. So, why bond funding? One, the proposed bonds would fund must-have capital investment projects, including roofs at each school, heating, ventilation, roof equipment, and electrical system upgrades. Bond funding reduces the risk of deferring of necessary investments to maintain this town's single-largest capital asset. Later in the presentation, I'll review these specific projects. Two, these must-have investments are long-life assets with useful lives of 25 to 30 years. Bond funding promotes prudent sharing of these investment costs between current taxpayers and future taxpayers. Three, bond funding promotes scheduled asset maintenance and asset and liability matching. As roofs and other assets depreciate, the related liability declines as bonds mature, freeing capital to meet future mandatory capital investment needs. Four, as discussed in the previous slide, the relatively large investment cost for individual must-have projects can create budget volatility. And last, bond funding for a portion of projected capital improvement needs can help minimize the tax impact in the year of the investment, in this case, 2015-2016. I would note, bond funding represents approximately 33% of the total projected CIP needs in the next three years, meaning that there will be a required investment through the annual CIP budget to meet these important investment needs. So, what are the specific projects? As you can see in the top one is a high school roof replacement. The estimated cost is $800,000. The age of that roof, or those roofs, in 2016 will be 29 years. And looking at engineering useful life estimates, roofs on average last 25 to 30 years. The second one's middle school roof replacement, $175,000. The age in 2016 would be 32 years. The useful life estimate for such an asset is 25 to 30 years. Poncove roof replacement, $175,000. The age of that roof in 2016 will be 31 years. The useful life would be 25 to 30 years. Middle school rooftop heating recovery unit, 325,000 years. The age in 2016, when the work would be done, would be 23 years. The useful life is 20 to 25 years. The electrical primary service upgrade at the high school, $275,000. The age of that asset in 2016 would be 48 years. In summary, by category, roof replacement is approximately, or 65% of the request. Roof or HVAC equipment is 19%. The electrical systems are 16%. And if you look at the average asset being replaced, it's 33 years. As we mentioned, the bond funding would support required capital investment. In summary, by category, roof replacement is approximately, or 65% of the request. Roof or HVAC equipment is 19%. The electrical systems are 16%. And if you look at the average asset being replaced, it's 33 years. As we mentioned, the bond funding would support required capital investments at all three schools. I would note, these projects are must-haves. They're not discretionary, nor expansionary, nor new build, nor renovation projects. As I mentioned, 84% of the projects are roof replacement and roof equipment. Included in the presentation packet, also available, like I mentioned, to all stakeholders are additional details of each project. It was included in a memo by the Buildings and Grounds Team, in Greg Marles, the Director of Facilities. So if you look at the next steps, obviously, the first step would be to request the Town Council to seek the issuance of bonds for 1.75 million for school capital improvement projects. Two, if a referendum vote is required, we would request the vote to be held. It says in the first half of 2014, I would say, request the vote to be held in time for adequate budget preparation time for the 2015, 2016 budget. Three, we'll continue, I would recommend the School Board continues to communicate to all stakeholders the district's capital investment project needs and the rationale for the proposed bond funding. And last, for the School Board to continue to work closely with the Town Council to coordinate bond, the bond funding process and to promote the One Town Concept. I could give you examples of that, but we're, I've been in communications with the, with the Town Council on this proposal, timing, some considerations. So that's the formal presentation. I would note that the 10-year capital stewardship report, the joint CIP summary, that includes all of Cape's needs, which would be community services, school, municipalities are included in an analysis, so all stakeholders can see what needs are upcoming. There's also bond funding proposals from the school, which exactly matches this bond funding proposal as well. And I would like a couple considerations. We try to be responsive to stakeholders, so I would encourage the School Board, if there's, for requests on, you know, what might the School Board do in a budget in the future? That the budgeting process, obviously, is an annual budget process. That budget, it requires the voters to approve, so I think it's challenging to predict how a School Board, two years from now, may budget, when we're still preparing the budget to the 2014, 2015. I know there may be, people may need to feel compelled, but we, I would say, we don't know what the needs are, would be in 2015 and 16, and try to say, here's how we're going to allocate certain dollars for the overall budget. I, hopefully stakeholders underprove that, and the great thing is, the voters approve to continue the referendum process, so voters will obviously be part of that discussions as we look at those budgets on an annual basis. I also heard some requests tonight on establishing a rainy day fund. We do a lot of contingency planning as part of the annual budget process. While I definitely think there's a lot of analysis that we do on contingency planning, that again is something that may be more appropriate for the budget meeting. In terms of, you know, how can we know exactly for sure how much this roof may cost? A lot of times, the way these are written, and this will be up to the Town Council, it could be up to 1.75 million. Obviously, if we get new information, better estimates, obviously, we're going to aggressively bid the projects, and if those estimates change, that would be communicated to the stakeholders. One reason we're trying to get this done now for 2015 and 2016, if you're not on the School Board, or, you know, the 2015, 2016 year begins in July 1st of 2015. Before you know it, will be in 2014. So to plan all these projects, to coordinate these projects, so we don't have to interrupt the school year, that's the reason for bringing it forward tonight, to provide adequate planning time. And based on what happens tonight, and working with the Town Council, the Buildings and Grounds Committee and Greg Marles will start looking at bidding, looking at coordinating the projects, and any changes in our estimates, we would share with stakeholders. And I think the last issue was on contractor issues. You know, the district, I imagine, will, you know, will look at these issues. I know we've looked at them, but again, you know, based on what happened in the past, doesn't necessarily change a need going forward. So based on the lives of these assets, we, that could be an option to look at, but it, to me, I don't think it impacts the need for these investments. And I know I'm jumping around, but yes, if you do issue bonds, there's an interest component to that. That's one reason why I mentioned that bond funding would fund roughly 33% of the projected capital needs over the next three years. So this balances different stakeholder views on this, but most importantly, it provides a path for us to meet these capital improvement needs while minimizing the annual tax impact. So hopefully, I try to address it. I'm sure there's, will be more questions. If you do have questions, please forward us, forward those to the School Board. We are open to suggestions, but I'm very confident this is a great roadmap for the district, and the bond funding is just one component of it. School budget meetings will include looking at the annual bunch, budget contribution, but I feel confident that this plan will be best for the district in terms of minimizing the risk that these projects aren't done in the future. And I would just encourage stakeholders to look at some of the projects going on surrounding districts, and a 1.75 million bond funding, based on our overall capital needs, I think is very reasonable. So if the School Board has any questions, fire away. That means ask, ask questions if you have them.
I don't have a question, but I do think you've, what people don't understand is what I think you're trying to articulate. We have to balance a lot of moving parts, and about a third of this is going to be done by bond, about two-thirds of it depends on our tax revenues, both state and local, which we have a hard time predicting. And I think the fact that we're taking, we're doing this by only, about one-third by bonding is a reasonable risk to take, in fact, a very conservative risk to take, because the other two-thirds are sometimes beyond our control. So I support what you're proposing.
Yes?
As want to say, to John?
Hold on, so people can hear you.
I just want to say that you started this work, or we started this work, a long time ago, and I love your committee to your, you always put a blurb in, remember, in two months, we will be looking at this, these numbers. Remember, in three months, we'll be looking at this. Remember, at the budget, we'll be looking at this. And you've carried us through with different decisions to make, and different reports to look at, to be best informed about what's happening, and I feel very confident with this work. We've had conversations along the way, the One Town Concept, looking at the harem, harem and report. I have a really good feeling, one, being a person that's not a math person, the confidence of looking at the comprehensive report of this, I think makes me feel very confident to vote yes.
Well, I would add, add to that, along those lines, Michael, that for the, for the benefit of the public that may be watching, the best way to, to understand the underlying thinking behind the proposal tonight is to, is to follow with the documents that was created, created by your, have been created by your committee throughout the process, which began in October 2011, and your first slide indicated, you know, all of the work that went into that process, all, all of the different various looks at the, at the needs of the facilities, all the different reasoning for, for, you know, why the work that needed, needed to be done, and what, and how we might finance that work going forward. That, that, all of that information, and many of the issues that we heard tonight are, can be found in, in those documents, which very carefully lay out the thinking behind, behind where we are now. That, that's a really valuable resource for anybody who wants to understand why the School Board is proposing a, a bond.
And, you know, after, depending on the vote tonight, obviously, like I said, the community dialogue will continue. I didn't want to, we shouldn't presume how we're all going to vote, so obviously, we will continue stakeholder dialogue, make, I'm sure there'll be frequently asked questions. We'll make those answers available, readily available on the website, any updates from the Town Council on the process. The whole goal is to, you know, promote transparency and answer questions stakeholders have. So this would just be the first step in, in the education process. Obviously, in terms of the process itself, the Town Council has a big say in that, so we'll coordinate with them. So we, you know, the documents are available, and we're going to make it simpler to access on the website, obviously, based on what the School Board decides tonight. So actually, I'm going to sit down. I feel a little awkward in this.
Could I make one point, John?
Yes.
A question was raised tonight about, and I'm not going to give it too much discussion, about whether or not, why should we not fund some of this lawsuit? The problem with a lawsuit is, you don't necessarily win them. And lawsuits take two to three years, and if we need to do repairs now, we can't be able to fund it with monies we might get in the future.
And they cost money.
I'm just going to get to that factor.
Sorry.
There's a risk benefit analysis in a lawsuit. A major lawsuit against a major company, it could easily cost $200,000 to $300,000. You go to arbitration. Arbitration tends to split the baby, so you can end up spending almost as much as you get three years from now, when we need to do the repairs now. That's assuming if you win. These are very complex, I don't do construction law, but they're very complex. The, within reasonable standards is something that can be argued about, ad infinitum, appeals to higher courts. You could easily be winning multiple years before, even if you win, to see this money. I think even if, and I haven't studied this issue, but if somebody was to ask me, and I'm technically no longer a lawyer, although I was one, that if somebody was to ask me, which would you rather do? Fix your buildings now and roll the dice in a lawsuit that you might get half the money you need five years from now? My answer would be, you'd be nuts to do it anyway, other than build with a, a finite, expected cash flow from a bond or from revenues. That's how you fix your problems, not the lawsuits.
Thank you, David. Are there any other comments?
I would just like to thank Michael for ushering this process through.
Yes.
You have been very thoughtful, considerate, and thorough in every presentation that you've ever given the Board on these issues, and it's enabled us to move forward on these future budgets in a predictable way, that also address clear priorities to protect our assets before they require costly repairs from damage. So I appreciate the thoroughness, and also the obvious collaborative approach that you've taken to putting all this forward. So thank you.
I would second that.
I was going to say, ditto. She just stole my thunder. I was waiting.
Same.
Well, it's important to understand, I, you know, for people to understand that how these presentations have been extremely thorough, extremely carefully presented. Michael has, has held our hand through this process for a very long time, and any, anyone interested in this issue, it has at their disposal some documents that make the, this reasoning very clear.
Yes.
And I think that's, that's very valuable, and I think it's the reason why we're getting more comments than questions tonight as we consider this issue, that the Board has had lots and lots of opportunity to understand why this is the course of action that's on the table. So thank you for that, Michael. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor? Lost my place.
Committee report. All right, we're on.
We are, again, we are not, we're going to skip item G, and we are, we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee chairs?
I'm not a chair. Oh, I'm on a committee.
Okay. Any committee members who have reports to make?
Town Center Planning Committee has a meeting next Monday, November 18th, 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is that, is that, that's not a meeting to gather public input?
No, no, it's just a meeting where they'll be assessing public input and, and moving forward with a plan. So the reason we're on that is because the schools take up, you know, the schools take up a lot of the town center property, so for anyone who's interested.
Thank you again for your service on that committee.
You're welcome.
Are there any other committee members with reports to make? No. Okay. Item eight, School Board Agenda Requests. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Oh, okay. Item nine, Announcement of Upcoming Meetings. So Mary mentioned one on the 18th. Also, on the 18th, the School Board Negotiations Committee is meeting. On the 26th, we have our regularly scheduled monthly workshop. We're addressing one of the goals that we set at the beginning of the year, which is to look at the achievement gap in our schools. So that should be a very interesting workshop. And on, I think it's, on our calendar, it says the 9th of December is the policy meeting, second Monday. So we'll have to confirm that that's.
Yes, we will.
That's what it says on the public calendar, so.
Please let me know.
We pushed back the meeting because of the holiday, and so I'm sure going forward, it just got.
Yeah.
Oh, it got.
That may be what happened, so that maybe have to be corrected on the calendar.
I bet it does.
Okay.
Because it usually is the first Monday.
Okay.
Oh, I wanted to mention something, John.
Yes, Mary.
I'm, I'm, are you done with dates?
Yes.
One of the things I should have mentioned during recognition, or should have asked, should have spoken with you about, was I wanted to thank Kate for her service on the Library Committee. They presented their report last week, or was it earlier this week, Kate?
I think Thursday.
Oh, it was last Wednesday.
Yes.
And for those who have not looked at it, the report is very impressive, and you can watch it on the Town Council, on the website, you can, you know, look it up and watch it. But Kate, that was a labor of love, that was many, many, many meetings.
29 meetings in like 31 weeks, 34 weeks, something. But a really nice document for anyone to look at.
Very thorough document, so I didn't want that to go by without.
Thank you.
Some recognition for Kate's blood, sweat, and tears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
That said, item 10, Adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Oh, I move that we adjourn.
Oh, I move that we adjourn.
I stole you.
I'll take Mary's motion. Does anyone?
And can, can everybody stay a little bit? I want to get a picture of all of my, all of my friends.
Is there a second?
I will second, Mary.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you, Mary.
Thanks. Susannah, will you?